Yeah, it's uh, yeah. It's Thanksgiving. Yeah. 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 Yeah.[95.12]
Focusing on into the future. So that's scheduled for the next round and preparations are under, already underway. I think I'll leave you. I don't know if I can, I was gonna click on, click on that image just to bring up the website so folks can see that in real life. But again, appreciate the opportunity to be working on this with you. I'm very excited about what I think will be a process that will set the model for other communities across the region when it comes to updating the comprehensive plan. So thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council, and thanks to the department heads for their participation as well to this point. Happy to take any questions, but I know you have had a long agenda, probably want to get home at some point.
Counsel, anybody have questions?
I appreciate the hard work on it. I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Same thing.
Well, gentlemen, thank you so very much, and I would certainly encourage everyone to go to the Plan Gallatin website. It is robust and, and it offers you a lot of information that you've probably not had the opportunity to see before. So please do that and, and use the new survey to offer additional input because that's what this is about. It's about getting citizen input. And, and so, the more, the better. And the, and the more, the more we hear from the citizens, the more the citizens are going to be represented. So please do that, encourage your neighbors to do that, tell people about it that might not know about it. Because this doesn't need to be the council's plan, or the mayor's plan, or the department head's plan. It needs to be the residents' plan. And, and we have to hear from you for that to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move now to the regular agenda. And Items One and Two have been deferred, so we will pick up with Item Number Three, which is a First Reading on Ordinance 01908-39. And for that, Councilwoman Love is recognized.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin rezoning 8.78 plus or minus acres from A Agricultural Residential District to the MRO Multiple Residential Office District with a preliminary master development plan for Tompkins Farm Phase Two, located east of Old Scottsville Pike and west of Airport Road, authorizing the revision to be indicated to the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing perseveranceability, and providing for an effective date. Now so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion
on this? Okay, this is First Reading on Ordinance 01908-39. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item Four is First Reading on Ordinance 01908-42, Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning 205.27 acres from the agricultural residential district to the mixed-use district, 109.51 acres, to the R8 PRD medium-density residential planned, residential development district, and 87.32 acres, and to the CC Core Commercial District, 8.44 acres, with a preliminary master development plan for the Thorn Creek at Kennesaw Farms, located east of Big Station Camp Creek Boulevard, north of Nashville Pike, and south of the CSX railroad road. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion on this? I'd like to ask the developer a couple of questions if they're here, if they're representative for this project present.
David Lucky, Southeastern, this is Cal Gentry.
Hi. When I'm looking at this, it says 632 single-family detached residential lots. I'm thinking that's a hu, a home, a house, I mean.
Yes, ma'am.
A single house. Then 56 single-family attached residential lots. Um, where is it? Is that a townhouse? Are those townhouses?
Those are villa units. They're single-story villa units that are attached with a common wall.
Okay. And then it says, uh, where am I? Okay, various open space tracks. So, does that mean that there's going to be a park there? And how many playgrounds for all these people? I'd like to know that.
Brief overview. We've got one main community center, and we have multiple pocket parks throughout the development. It's on the open space, uh, part of the presentation. We've got about 35% of the total project is open space. And, um, the townhome section and the stacked flat section both have their own community pool and clubhouse as well.
So there's more than one clubhouse?
Yes, ma'am, three.
With a pool?
Yes, ma'am.
And do the playgrounds have, well, the open spaces, it have playground equipment?
Uh, some of the open spaces, the, the main clubhouse will have a playground, yes.
Okay. It seems like you need, you're, you're gonna have a whole lot of children there, is...
Well, actually, the, the stacked flats and the townhomes are both geared towards empty nesters and, uh, people that are just starting out, first-time home buyers. And so, one of the reasons we gave them their own, um, amenity was so that they could, they could, you know, use that amenity separate from the main pool and clubhouse.
Okay, I see. Um, so this is, how many, I don't remember, if it's 1,400 units altogether, maybe? I feel like this is in the middle of the busiest area of town already. And so how, what's the traffic study?
Well, I'll let Cal speak to that, but it's, uh, before the Core Commercial, it's 1,370 units. Um, we have, uh, I think it's just over 1,400 based upon the Core Commercial, but we haven't, we had, we had to assign a number to the Core Commercial because it could, it could have residential upstairs above the retail. But that's not set in stone. We don't know until we get to that point. Um, it's in between two other projects that we have. There's essentially no neighbors except for the property that I own bo, on both sides of it. So, uh, and we're building the main Boulevard through, from Kennesaw Farms over to Big Station Camp Creek.
And you feel like with, if, I mean, I know you're gearing it towards empty nesters, but chances are there'll be some kids there. Would you feel like that there's plenty of places for the kids to, to play?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I mean, our projects are, uh, much more desirable if we, we serve all the different buyer types. And we, that's the reason we have so many different product profiles in this particular development, is because we wanted to reach millennials and have affordable housing. And then we want to have empty nesters. And, and so we've, we've got to appeal to the buyer.
Okay. And what about traffic studies?
Cal Gentry with Southeastern. Um, our traffic studies for Kennesaw Farms on the East End and Westfield on the West End, both in, both took into account a future development, this development of this farm. And we're currently updating the plan to take into consideration the actual design of Thorn Creek. So that the end, the ends where we tied a big station in 31 should be adequate to handle those. Think they'll both be signalized. And it'll be a nice, quick way to get from the bypass back to 31 without having to go all the way down to Hendersonville. So, our engineers are working diligently on that study, but we feel like we've accommodated everything that'll, that'll come, that'll come out of it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Kyle, Cal, and David. I believe you guys mentioned that, um, you, you got this, um, these lake condos going up right there?
Yes.
Uh, you guys also mentioned that when we get ready to clean that area up, that y'all be willing to partner with Gallatin and the dredging operations and stuff?
We would, uh, we have been after, uh, Mayor Brown for years to be involved.
And I've been working on, we've been trying.
Yes, we wanna...
We're about to make progress. But they, they have, from the beginning, said that they wanted to participate with that.
I'd like to see that.
Us as well.
Well, I publicly will want to say that I appreciate the effort to preserve the structure that's on that property. I'm so glad that that's not going to be gone. So. Anyone else have any questions on this? Um, with that, we'll have First Reading on Ordinance 01908-42. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gentry and Mr. Lucky.
Thank you.
Item Number Five is First Reading on Ordinance 01908-43, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is appropriating $35,000 for construction of mid-block pedestrian crossing on Main Street. Now so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? This is First Reading on Ordinance 01908-43. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item Six is Resolution R1902-9, Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution adopting the Sumter County Hazard Mitigation Plan. I so move.
Second.
Okay, have a motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion on this? Okay, this is Resolution R1902-9. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item Seven is Resolution R1908-34, Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is a resolution accepting public improvements by the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, Carrollton Phase One, Section B, Lot 69. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fan. Any discussion? Resolution R1908-34. In favor, please say aye.
No.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item Eight is Resolution R1908-35, Councilman Hayes.
This is a resolution accepting public improvements by the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, Carrollton Phase One, Section A. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fennell. Discussion? All right. Resolution R1908-35. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item Nine is Resolution R1908-36, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution accepting public improvement, City Gallatin, Tennessee, Fairway Farms, Phase Three, Section 1C. And I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion on this? It's Resolution R1908-36. If everyone in favor would please say aye, and opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item Ten, Resolution R1908-37, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution public, accepting public improvements by the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, Fairway Farms, Phase Two, Section Three. And I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion? This is Resolution R1908-37. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item Eleven is Resolution R1908-38. You're it, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution accepting public improvements, City Gallatin, Tennessee, Twin Eagles, Phase 12, Section B. And I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. Discussion? It's Resolution R1908-38. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item Twelve is Resolution R1908-39, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution accepting public improvement, City Gallatin, Tennessee, Twin Eagles, Phase 11, Section B. And I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion on this? It's Resolution R1908-39. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item Thirteen is Resolution R1908-40, Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is a resolution accepting public improvements by the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, Vintage at Foxland Harbor. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion on Resolution R1908-40? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item Fourteen is Resolution R1908-41, Councilman Overton.
Yes, ma'am. This is a resolution accepting public improvements by the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, Fairway Farms, Phase Two, Section One. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? This is Resolution R1908-41. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. And with that, the City of Gallatin just gained a lot of property. The next item is Fifteen, Resolution R1908-42, Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution reappointing Michelle Hines to the Sumter County Board Equalization. I so move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Camp, second by Councilman Overton. Any discussion? It's Resolution R1908-42. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item Sixteen is Resolution R1908-43, Councilwoman Love.
Thanks, Mayor. This is a resolution appointing Richie Harville as board member of the Gallatin Economic Development Agency Board. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? It's Resolution R1908-43. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item Seventeen is Resolution R1908-47, Councilman Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution establishing Assistant Director of Human Resources by reclassification of vacant human resources generalist. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion, questions on this?
I'll just make one comment. There will be some money involved, so just, some additional money, correct? Okay. I just want everybody to know that. I've asked that a couple times, but I support it. I just want to let everybody know.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, this is Resolution R1908-47. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item Eighteen is Resolution R1908-48, Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing the Gallatin Economic Development Agency to apply for a site development grant from the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? Anyone? Last item you have the opportunity to discuss tonight.
I'm trying to read that one.
It's Resol, uh, thank you. It's Resolution R1908-48. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. And that concludes the regular agenda, bringing us now to other business. Is there any, Councilman Overton?
Mr. McCord, could you come up just one second, please? Mr. McCord, the Honda store, you know, I've talked to you a couple times about that. What, what's we found out about that situation, the lights?
We haven't, I, I haven't, and we haven't been out to monitor the light, the lumen. Uh, you did call me, I guess, last week and asked about that, so...
I know we're really busy, but these, there's two or three folks out there that are really concerned, and I don't blame them. I've been out there twice and looked at it myself, and it is pretty bad, especially at night when you're in the subdivision looking back out towards Gallatin Road. It's actually the lights that's on Gallatin Road facing back, it's not actually the ones in the interior as much as it is the ones on Gallatin Road facing back. So, if you'll see that somebody gets out there this week, I'd greatly appreciate it. Now, you know, my main concern is, are they, is this plan according to what they're supposed to do?
All right. The fixtures, we did check that. The fixtures are in the location that they were shown on the plan, is whether they're pointed and down as opposed to maybe some pointing out towards the neighborhood. That's something we'll have to check on. I did go by there on Saturday morning about, uh, at, at dawn. It was still sort of dark. And just kind of looked at them as I was driving by. And some of them looked like they are not uniformly directed to the pavement, so...
If you, if you're sitting there and you look at the Kroger store, look versus that, that place, it's all the difference in the world, okay? I mean, the Kroger store is, is targeted on with it. And, but when you're in that subdivision, I, I don't blame those folk for fussing because it is really bad.
Yeah, it's gonna take a while for those trees that have been planted to mature.
But if you get us natural on that in a few days, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else with other business on this council? I do want to tell the council that two weeks ago, the gentleman that was here about the honeybees in his yard, I spoke to Mr. McCord about it, and relief is actually going to have to come from this council because he does not have a way with his property situation to be able to be able approved in-house. So this council will have to be able to approve that if you so desire. And...
I don't need to.
Get in touch with him and let him come back with the approval of his neighbors and maybe at next week's work session, so...
Right.
Anyone else? All right. We'll move along then to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. You may come forward if you have something that you'd like to speak to that's not on the evening's agenda. You'll have five minutes to do so. And again, we ask that you give us your name and address, please. Public recognition on non-agenda-related items is open.
Good evening. Frank Marchese, M-A-R-C-H-E-S-E, 589 Harris Lane. Um, my, this is the third time I've been up here. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, I'm not going to talk about the intersection of Long Hollow and Harris. I know that's being reviewed and, and worked on at the moment. Um, I do want to just give you an update on blasting. Um, I, I was able to speak to Southern Site contractors for the blasting damage to my home. They claim that because of the seismograph readings that they've taken at the Freedom Church, that my home could not have been affected by the blasting they've done. And the gentleman at Southern Site just will not cooperate. So I, I am in the process now. I, I've spoken to several neighbors. They, they also have experienced damage. I believe it's unfair for Southern Site to say that their blasting contractor has not done any damage to the homes around Harris and Long Hollow and, and Greenly in that area. Because the damages is evident. I have a contractor coming Friday to tear out my master bathroom shower because the foundation has shifted and I can't use it anymore because it leaks. Um, he claims that the readings were 1.06 and not enough to cause damage. And my home was not part of the original survey because I am not within 300 feet of the blast radius. Well, it's a large construction site. So, the blast radius, I don't get it. Do they pinpoint the middle and go out around? It's very confusing. So, with, because it's so confusing, I am going to hire an attorney and I'm going to go after this company and the blasting company. And I would ask that council, if, if anybody has any connection with Southern Site, maybe somebody could ask someone other than this person here, Mr. Joe Ray. Um, maybe somebody other from, other than the company, other than him from the company could contact me. I'm going to keep calling them and I'm going to keep, keep on them about it. I, I also have not heard back from the state fire marshal about any of my four complaints that I've made for blasting. They will not comment on an open investigation. I am the complaton. I don't understand why they don't come to me and ask me what the problem is rather than just determining that there is no problem. I, I'm not asking you for answers right here. I, I just want you to know what the concerns are, not only for me, but for my neighbors also. Um, I'm, I'm beginning to have concerns now. I read in the Gallatin News that, you know, Dollar General's going to go in on Greenly. Are they going to do blasting to put the Dollar General in? And how is that going to affect my home too? Because that's even closer than the whole project going up Greenly. I, I'm concerned that projects are getting approved, contractors are starting work, they're getting permits for blasting from the state, not from the town. So the city doesn't, the city doesn't even know that this is occurring. And you guys are out of the loop on, on what's happening in your own city. Because the state, if the state issues the permit, you don't know about it. And I don't think that's fair to the council. I don't think it's fair to the residents. Somebody needs to take responsibility for the damage being done. Just because somebody puts a seismograph in one location is not a know-all, end-all. I have a, a report from Florida, from Dade County, Florida stating that even though that the 1.06 is within acceptable rating, there is a 5% chance that damage could still be done to a person's property within the immediate blast range. And this is what I'm going to have my lawyer argue with them with. But now I have to shell out money for a lawyer. I'm new to the state. I'm new to the city. You guys know this. And, and here I am putting out money to fight for repairs to my home, which I did not cause. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Have you, have you not filed a claim with your insurance company?
No, I have not. I am not filing a claim with my homeowner's insurance. I, why? Why is that my responsibility? And why should my premium go up because someone else has done damage to my home?
Well, it probably wouldn't go up. I'm just saying, but they would be the ones that would be fighting it for you. I mean, I'm...
I will try, but as soon as I hear that my premium's going to go up, that's the end of it.
The reason I say, the reason I say that, I'm an insurance agent. I know that.
That's great.
But it's, um, the, um, it, it's just, it's hard to prove blasting. I used to work in claims and, you know, we went on some blasting claims and stuff like that back years ago. It's, it's hard to prove it compared to settling and stuff like that because you see so much settling in this area.
Well, councilman, it, it can't be that hard to prove. I have a wall that was pristine when I moved in, had painted. Blasting started and now there's a split in the wall.
Yeah.
So, that's not gradual settling.
Yeah.
My home inspector said there were no leaks in the shower. The blasting started and now I can't use my shower.
Yeah. But that's why it might be better to do that and then let them fight it out because they're probably, you know, they, they're going to provide the attorney and everybody else to do that, so...
The state advises you to make a complaint, to contact the contractor, contact your insurance company. I, I just don't know what the sequence of events should be. They just, the state's website just has a PDF document telling you what you should be doing, and nothing saying that they will get back to you with their results.
Um, I would offer too, that I know in the past, the state fire marshal has put seismographs in different areas to measure the blasting impacts on areas where they felt like they, they were suspect that they were being impacted. So that might be something that you ask for from the state as well.
I will. And I, like, and like I said, I am still concerned with the upcoming development of, of Greenly Boulevard.
And how far away are you?
I am between Harri, um, Harris Lane, between Long Hollow and Greenly, dead center.
How far are you away from that subdivision of blasting?
I, I don't know. I don't have a ruler that long. Honestly, I, I don't know.
The reason I'm asking is, when they're doing that development behind where my office is, I mean, I know, I'm probably, what would y'all say?
300 yards, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, 300, 400 yards. But I know they came and took pictures inside, outside of my house.
I don't know what they did before I bought my house.
Side of the ground, right there.
I, I have no idea what they did before they bought my house. Nobody is telling me if they did anything. I, he said, if you're not within 300 feet...
Well, they have to disclose that.
We don't have to survey.
Yeah.
So, I'm not within 300 feet.
I was thinking it was 1,000 feet, but I might be wrong.
He said I'm 700 feet away. That's what he told me.
So, let me ask you, is this the, is this not the subdivision right beside of your house?
No, that's not Liberty Creek.
This is the one that's up there by the church?
Correct. Back to the church.
Okay.
And back at the Freedom Church.
I always thought it was the one going in beside of your house.
No, they started a sewer line on the corner of Harris and Greenly going up to the division. So I forget what the subdivision is called. Somebody told me and...
I don't even know what you're talking about.
I forget. Kensington.
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 I know which one you're talking about.
Yes. Liberty Creek's a whole different story. I, I have my arguments with them, but they're pretty cooperative, so...
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of city council. And just so you know, I come here on a bigger scope, but I want to, I'm going to help this guy get some lawyers. Because like everyone says, confusing, that costs a lot of money, especially with lawyers, I know. Secondly, if you look at USA Today, they discuss about how pregnant mothers, babies are being poisoned by fluoride. I went to Ms. Brown, as nice as you are, I did go to you almost about a year and a half ago, and say, give me one dentist, just one, that says they prescribe someone fluoride to bathe in. You said they all supported, but you never showed me one dentist...
Okay, Mr. Reed, I'm going to interrupt with that. No dentist wants to prescribe fluoride for someone to bathe in.
So why do you give it to people to bathe in?
But they are all supportive of it for dental health. Everyone I've talked to.
So why do you give it to people to bathe in?
We're not going to debate. I'm just clarifying your statement.
You're not going to debate here at this meeting, okay?
No, she's not even supposed to question me. I get five minutes to talk.
You're not going to do it at this meeting?
I get five minutes to talk. So, secondly, I, I want to thank you guys. I, I really want to appreciate you all for just giving me the opportunity to speak for my five minutes and not cut me off. I appreciate it. I want, I want to tell the town that I believe the city council does care about y'all. I really do. I believe they do care. But due care is a crime. Fair to have due care is a crime. So, they have due care. But do they give due process? That's another issue. A gentleman comes up talking about his building being demolished and he gets questioned when it's only public recognition. But here's what I'll tell you guys right now. I challenge you guys again. One dentist, just one, out of all the dentists in the whole world to show you they prescribe fluoride for children to bathe in, like you're giving to them. Just one, not two, just one, and I'll be happy because you can't do it. You know why? Because it's poison. And I'm going to find some lawyers and I am going to tell you right now. I can show you better than I can tell you, just like I'm going to sue Ray Whitley and when he arrested me last year. Yeah, I'm suing Ray Whitley. That's my new case. Okay?
And Chief Bandit, again...
Hey, hey, you don't call names. You may address the council and the mayor.
I can call names. I'm just going to sue y'all.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items? You may come forward at this time. All right, I see no one. We will declare public recognition on non-agenda-related items closed. And with that...
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. All in favor, say aye.
I forgot the...
Opposed, say no. We are adjourned. Everyone have a lovely evening and we will see you again. I'm sorry.
Can you hear me a little bit better? I'm a little trained by...